All right. I would like to welcome everybody to the New Fane Select Board Meeting Tuesday, February 22, 2022. It is six, almost 6:02. It's nice to see a lot of people attending via Zoom. Thank you. We have Shelley Huber, Katie Johnson-Appleton, Ann Galloway, myself, Angela Sanborn, here in person, and we have Mike Fitzpatrick on the phone. And we have one member of the public and our administrative assistant. And we'd like to welcome back Austin after a little hiatus, our BCTV camera operator. Welcome back. Are there any additions or amendments to the agenda?
We need to talk about the town mask mandate.
Juanetta has that in her report, so that's already done. Any others? And we'll move to approval of the minutes for the February 7, 2022 regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there, is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call since Mike is on the phone. All those in favor, nay or abstain, say. Mike?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Myself, Angela, aye. Great. And we have Jay Wilson, our road foreman. Excited for all this weather we're having?
It's just wonderful.
And we're ready for your report.
Looks like out of snow at the end of the week. So the board should have the contract for Wyndham Regional Commission to be the municipal project manager for the New Fane Village Pedestrian Scoping Study, and it will need to be signed. The sand salt shed is headed for a final review with V-Trans, and hopefully it will be up to bid in a couple of weeks.
Great.
Reno Brothers are planning on doing some work under the Arch Bridge in the next week or two, and it looks like everything is scheduled weather permitting. One other thing I forgot to put in here is the Depot Road, Fox Culver, the three days' notice was up today, I believe it is, or yesterday. So I left a message this morning to try to get some information from Fisher's office, and I didn't get a call back. So I'm waiting to hear from them how to proceed so we can take that little piece of land that we need to use for the, for the box culver. And the board has a copy of the proposal from William Company to begin the permit process for the gravel pit.
That's that one.
We just need to sign that?
We need a motion for somebody to authorize you.
authorize whom? Someone to sign it?
There's only one place for someone.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that Angela sign the agreement on behalf of the board. Great. Any discussion on this?
This is a different question. Did we actually close on the question?
We did. We closed today.
Yay.
Fiona Brown, yay.
Good job, everyone. All right. Any further?
Hard to believe.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor or abstain or deny, say so. Mike?
Aye.
Shelley?
I'm.
Katie?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Great. I will sign that tonight.
Okay. Can you have the one from Wyndham Regional also?
I do not have that one.
I will get that for them before the end of the meeting. You want to make a motion for that one as well.
Do we, is there a motion for someone to sign the contract for Wyndham Regional Commission?
For the scoping project?
Yes.
I make a motion that Angela sign for, on behalf of the board.
Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, nay or abstain, say so. Mike?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Great. Is there a motion to accept the road? Foreman and commissioner's report.
I make a motion.
Second?
My second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, nay or abstain. Mike?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Myself, aye. And now we are moving on to Juanetta's report, the administrative assistance report.
I will review the New Fane ordinances and policies and have them ready for the New Fane Select, the new Select Board to read and review. I will edit any changes or recommendations and have them available to re-adopt at the March 14 meeting after everybody's been sworn in. I was notified on 2/17 that there was a possible dog bite that is currently being investigated by Ashley Pinger of the Wyndham County Sheriff's Department and Animal Control. I will keep the board informed as this is an ongoing investigation. The organizational meeting for the new Select Board will be on Thursday, March 3 at 6:00 PM. And the New Fane mask mandate may be re-adopted for another 30 days as of tonight. This rule will expire on April 30, so we have to do it one more time before that expiration.
I thought last time it was for 45 days.
The first, the first initial one was for 45 days. Each current, yeah, is for 30 days.
Thank you.
So I'm sure there's discussion on that. Anyone? Or shall we do a motion first?
Accept the minutes?
Motion, accept the mission, the minutes?
Or the report?
The report, yes, sorry.
I make a motion.
Is there a second? Discussion?
What's the discussion for just to vote on the mandate, right? Or just on our?
Well, that's part of the, part of what her report is about. Is there a discussion about it?
Well, I think, I mean, what are you going to do? Just vote on this is what we've had so far, this in the office?
It's just for a Select Board or?
It's just for the town hall.
Town, town-owned buildings.
Town-owned buildings and our meetings.
So it affects this building and Williamsville Hall. What?
So we don't, we don't have to make them more, I mean, the gardens and stuff?
No, no. Williamsville Hall and this building.
Right. Yeah. And that's only good for another 30 days then?
Right.
Yep.
Because I mean, it's doing all the talking, they're getting rid of a lot of that stuff, so.
But not yet.
All right.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to extend the mask mandate similar to what we did before for another 30 days.
Is there a second?
My second.
Was that Katie or Mike?
Katie's second.
Is there a discussion? We'll have some discussion.
Personally, I think it's nonsense at this point. And so I'm just going to verbally say no. I'm not in agreement.
Anyone else have anything to say?
Members have come way down in Vermont.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's time to reveal our faces. Hallelujah.
Anyone else?
I would just say that we certainly seem to be coming to the end of this, but we're not completely at the end. And I just think especially for the people working here in this office that is, that has been the request. So I am in favor of continuing it for another 30 days. I wouldn't be surprised if this would then be the end of it, but I would prefer to do it for another 30 days.
We can only hope and pray that this is the end of it.
Yes, absolutely.
Anyone else? All right. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, nay or abstain from the town of New Fane mask mandate be re-adopted for another 30 days that will expire on April 30.
The rule expires on April 30.
Oh, the rule.
We're doing this for another 30 days.
Sorry, you're right. I read that wrong. Mike?
Yeah.
Shelley?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Myself, aye. We'll go another 30 days, and we'll talk about it again. And at this point, I'm going to recess our Select Board meeting and turn it over to our town moderator, Deb Luskin, for our pre-town meeting informational. And this is happening at 6:11. Hi, Deb. The floor is yours.
Hi, Deb.
Right. Thank you. Welcome, and welcome to everybody who is attending the informational meeting for this year's Australian ballot. We will not be having an in-person town meeting. All, all decisions will be made by voting, paper ballot. They are available now at the, during office hours at the town office with town clerk. And you can vote up until 7 o'clock on March 1st, 7:00 PM on March 1st, when the polls will close. And there are contested seats, and there are over 30 articles. So first, a few things, just a reminder about how this works today. We are asking everyone but the Select Board and myself and the person who is recognized to speak to please stay muted and with your video off. And then when, if you want to speak, the other thing is that you need to have your name, your name the way we'll recognize you as someone who lives in New Fane or someone who is here to speak in favor of something or against something, explain something. I will recognize people who use the raise hand function on the, on your screen. So, and I should let you know that the chat is not being monitored now. So that's not going to work. If, once I call on you, I recognize you, please restate your name and where you live. Say what you have to say. And BCTV will invite you to unmute and turn on your video if you're calling in by Zoom. And if you're on the phone, you'll just be on the phone. When you're done speaking, we're going to ask you to please stop your video and mute your mic again. Again, the chat is not being monitored. I see people writing into it. We're not seeing it. So I'm sorry that we can't help you. If you need to ask a question, please use the raise hand function on your Zoom. So that's it. I thought what we did last year worked pretty well. Just go through the articles in order. Article 1 is about the open seats. People, there are people running, running for offices. If there are any questions or any comments about the offices that are open, any discussion about Article 1, please use the raise hand function on your, on your Zoom. Seeing none. We'll go on to Article 2, which is, shall the voters of town of New Fane pay taxes for the ensuing year on a quarterly basis due on the 15th of August, October, January, and April with a late charge for interest being at the rate of 0.5% per month for the current fiscal year and 0.75% from each month, per month for each month thereafter until paid? Bill Gunther, you have your hand up. What would you like to say? And do you have a video to turn on? Chair recognizes Bill Gunther. I think we're, we're waiting for BCTV to get Bill connected. Okay.
I sent him a request. He has not accepted it.
Yeah. Bill, in order, Bill Gunther, in order to speak, you must unmute your microphone. And BCTV has made it possible for you to speak.
There you are.
Not hearing Bill. I'm, I hope he's not talking and we're not hearing him.
He is unmuted.
Bill, we are not hearing anything you're saying. Are you there, Bill?
Can you type it in?
If you try rejoining the call, that sometimes fixes audio issues.
Nolan, what should we do here?
Um, I would move on.
Okay. We'll move on, and I'm sure, I'm sure if Bill can get this straightened out, we will hear from him later. Again, we can go through all these. We can talk about anything we want tonight, but we can't make any changes to the warning, which is already set, and voting has already started. So there seems to be no further discussion. If there's any discussion on Article 2, you have another chance to raise your hand. Otherwise, we'll move on to Article 3, which is, shall the voters of the town of New Fane authorize the treasurer to collect current taxes pursuant to the Vermont state statutes? No conversation. Article 4, shall the voters of the town of New Fane authorize the Select Board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through tax sale proceedings? Please use the raise hand function if you want to speak. And, uh...
Poor Bill.
This might be, Bill is not, and he's, he's not unmuted.
He said something about, I'm here, I'm unmuted, my telephone with star six.
No. Not working.
No, Bucky Pelso has a question.
All right.
Well, Bucky Pelso had his hand raised. I don't know if he still needs.
Bucky, I see Bucky's face, and I don't, I never saw a hand raised, but that's okay. Where'd he go? Now he's gone. Nolan, do you see Bucky Pelso? Can you?
Bucky is unmuted.
Okay.
Okay.
Bucky, welcome tonight. You're clapping your hands?
Bucky Pelso, New Fane Hill. I have a general question of information. Was there ever a time when there could be amendments made to the articles this year? I know we can't now, but was there ever a time when there was, voters could make an amendment?
A voter could have gone to any of the Select Board meetings at which these were brought up and discussed. Select Board meeting, this was all created in open Select Board meetings, the budget and the warning.
Information to the voters would have been very helpful.
I'm thinking of...
Hopefully we won't have to, hopefully we won't have to do this another year, but if we do, information to the voters of the process would be very helpful.
I'm sure the Select Board is hearing you. I, thank you. Do you have anything else to add?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Janice Hall from Senior Solutions has her hand up. I recognize Janice Hall. Welcome, Janice.
Hi, thank you. I'm just trying to help out with Bill. I see somebody represented by just a phone number there. And I know there was a, a name panel with Bill, but I think Bill is that phone number perhaps, and I wonder if that matters in terms of giving the right participant the permission.
He is now, I see he's now connecting to audio. So this is being connected. BCTV is in charge of connecting people? And Bill is still muted. I, I don't understand why. But thank you, Janice.
Hello?
Is there any, hello? Is that Bill?
Anybody hear me?
Yes, I hear somebody. Who is, who is speaking, please?
Okay. I think you got Bill, Deb. The problem I have is I'm going to appear twice because I have no camera on my computer, so you can't see me. I'm real low-tech, and I have no mic on my computer. So I can see and hear you guys on my computer and my computer speakers, but the only way I can talk to you, I have to call in on some ungodly long toll call, and I got to dial 28 numbers for an access code to get in.
All right. So Bill, I, I need to know for the record, are you 1-802-365-4252?
Yep. Only number I got. No cell coverage up here, so I don't have an own cellphone.
Okay.
So I'm going to be on twice.
We have, we have you twice, and we have you on the line. So please tell us what you want to say.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Wow. You didn't want to hear what I was saying before. A few choice words about technology. Anyway.
Well, thank you for your persistence.
On Article 1, I just wanted to try to get a sense, are we basically potentially losing all our current listers? I know Frank resigned, and is Doris getting done? Or I'm looking at the ballot and trying to sort out just what's happening with the Lister's office, I guess.
Is there anyone who can answer that question for Bill?
The only one that turned in their paperwork was...
Beckley.
Beckley Goddett. She's the only one that turned in paperwork for a two-year position for the Lister. Anybody else who write in?
Okay. So, yeah, that was the only name that I saw. So I'm assuming Doris is bailing out after many years, and Dennis as well?
Correct.
Yep. Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for persevering. All right. So we are now at, is there any other? Any comments about Article 4? If not, we'll go on to the special appropriations. Article 5, shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $500 to the American Red Cross? Is there any discussion? If so, please use the raise hand function on your screen.
That's Article 9. So we don't discuss the others?
All right. So seeing no raised hands, Article 6, shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $250 to the AIDS Project of Southern Vermont? Is there any discussion? Article 7, shall the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $1,500 to the Incorporated Village of the New Fane Union Hall? Yes, Bill?
Okay. Yeah. I'm just looking through, I'm looking at page 19, which is the proposed budget on the special appropriations. And the village has not requested anything, at least in the last few years. And, and about the middle of the page is their request. It just says Incorporated Village of New Fane. But the way the article actually reads dates, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,500 to Incorporated Village of New Fane? And then it says Union Hall there. So is this $1,500 for care or maintenance? Or, I guess, two questions. Is it a request? Or is it a request for something that's more of an emergent need?
Is there anyone here who can answer that question?
I think it's just a general request for maintenance of the Union Hall.
And that's a Select Board member, Shelley Huber.
That sort of leads to another question along that same line. When the town uses the Union Hall, and of course, I think we're the only town in the state that goes back and forth for our meeting, do we, does the town reimburse the village for any of those costs? Or has that always been done on a gratis basis?
I don't believe so. We don't believe that we've been charged anything when we've used that hall for Select Board, for a Town meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill, is that the end of the questions this time?
Yep. That takes care of me on that one. Thank you.
Okay. If you could press the secret, yeah, you did it. So we are now on Article 8. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $3,500 to Grace Cottage Hospital? Is there anyone who wants to speak to that? Bill Gunther? Bill, the chair recognizes you again.
Hello?
Yeah. We recognize you. The floor.
Yes. I would just like to speak in support of this. I've always felt Grace Cottage is the best little hospital in the world. They got the best docs in the world. They patched me up many times, and they gave me my life back with two new knees. So I want to give them a 200% endorsement.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to Article 8? Article 9, shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate $400 for Green Mountain RSVP? Bill, your hand is still up. Did you want to speak to this?
No. Do I, oh, you have to lower. I've never done the hand thing. So you raise it, and then you got to lower it. Oh.
That's right.
I'm sorry.
Okay. No, it's fine. We're all, we're all learning. It doesn't seem there's any discussion on Article 9, Article 10, shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,000 to Groundwork Collaborative? Any discussion? Or questions? Yeah.
So Deb, I just wanted to let everyone know that all of these people attended the meeting either by, you know, Zoom or in person, and they presented the merits of their request. And they were on over a period of time, and they were all publicly, you know, viewable and could be attended to. So just FYI for people, one of the criteria was that they had to attend and present their cause and their request in person in front of the Select Board.
And how they benefited New Fane.
Right. And also to tell us how many New Fane residents that they had been served. There we go.
And the other thing I would add is that those reports are now here in the town report.
Right. And, and actually, if you would look at the camera and speak, face the camera and speak, I don't, I didn't hear what you had to say.
I said that there are reports from each one of these groups soliciting money is part of... I said that there are reports from each one of these groups soliciting money is part of the town report.
Yes. So she says that if you look in your town report, there are reports from each of these organizations. The Green Mountain, I don't have that one down. It's the only one I didn't write the page number for. Groundworks Collaborative is on page 116. That's where we are. Let's move on to Article 11, which is to appropriate $1,850 for healthcare and rehabilitation services. You'll find that report on page 117. Is there any discussion or any questions? Article 12 is to appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Leland and Gray Education Foundation. The report is on page 119. And use the raise hand function if you want to say anything. I'll keep going. The town of Newfane, shall the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $2,700 to the Moore Free Library? That is on page 121. Article 14, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate $1,000 to Restorative Community Practice of Southern Vermont on page 123? Article 15, shall the voter of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,150 to Senior Solutions? The report is on page 124. And we have, we have a bid from Janice Hall from Senior Solutions. The chair recognizes Janice Hall. There you go. What can you tell us, Janice?
A bid. I love it. So I would just share with you a few highlights of our service numbers. It will take two or three minutes unless anybody else has questions and we could get those answered. But I don't see any other hands up. So we had given an unduplicated number of clients served to the select board. I don't have that in front of me right now, but I can tell you for our major services, we had served 26 folks with case management. And that was over 243 hours of service. We had, and this is over a year's time, ending in, ending June 30 of 2021. We had 15 home delivers, home-delivered meals clients. People usually know that as Meals on Wheels. And there were over 3,800 meals delivered. We had 102 calls from Newfane Williamsville to our, this would be either calls to our senior helpline or meetings to give the kinds of referrals that the senior helpline gives. So 102 calls. And our SHIP department, which is state health insurance program, counseling people on their options for especially Medicare. We helped 18 people with that over the course of 28 calls or meetings. And we also, to wrap up, had three people who were receiving volunteer services. And then, of course, we support with pass-through funds from the Older Americans Act, federal funding. We support local meal sites, which during COVID have been operating differently and sometimes not as robustly as they have been in the past. But we do that in partnership with the Newfane Congregational Church, the Dam Diner. And of course, people can also go to the Townsend Church and all of the other congregate meal sites around, like the Evening Star Grange in Dummerston and all that. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions. Other than that, I could be done.
Thank you for coming and bringing your information. If anyone has a question, I see Bill Gunther has a question. Bill, please ask your question to Janice. Waiting for Bill to come on the line?
Here he is.
I'm unmuted. Yes, I just wanted to speak in support of this for Senior Solutions. I participate in the Vet-to-Vet Program, which is veterans that get buddied up with other veterans that may need some help. And it's really a good program. Unfortunately, we haven't been as active as we'd like with COVID. But hopefully, if we get on the other side of it, we're going to be able to get things geared up. We've got a new coordinator, so there's a lot of energy there. And I wholeheartedly support this appropriation of Senior Solutions.
I wondered if it was that Bill. Thank you.
Are there any other questions while we have Janice visiting us? Thank you. Thank you, Janice. And thanks for what you do, for residents of Newfane. Article 16, shall the town, the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,600 for SEVCA? And their report is on page 126, if you haven't read it yet. Are there any questions or comments about SEVCA? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 17, which is to appropriate the sum of $5,178 to SEVeds, which is on page 109. Are there any questions about this appropriation or comments? Casey Haynes from SEVeds. We are recognized. Hi, Casey.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, thank you so much for having me on. I will try not, I'll try to be blissfully brief in here unless folks have any specific questions. But I'm here with SEVeds. We are the organization providing regional economic development support that Newfane residents and businesses are the beneficiaries of. So in 2021, and as a result of the pandemic, some, I'll just throw some quick numbers out there. And pardon me while I very conspicuously read them off my page over here. So Newfane, 18 Newfane organizations received liaison support from BDCC and SEVeds to help with state and federal loan and grant applications. 41 loans totaling almost $2.4 million were made to Newfane organizations employing 138 people. Three Newfane businesses received Restart Vermont Technical Assistance Programs, directly administered by our organization. Each of those grants was up to $4,000 each and at no cost to residents. So we do those kinds of business supports as well as high school programming. So we have this, my colleagues helps to ensure that programs like the Senior Survival at Leland and Gray can continue happening. So as well as other workforce programs, helping people who are already here as well as newcomers. For instance, Afghan refugees, we're helping them to make sure that they have good jobs in the area. So this is just like a small smattering of some of the things that we do. Happy to dig in a little bit deeper if anyone has questions.
Does anyone have, if anyone has a question for Casey while we have him on the line, please use your raise hand function on your screen. It doesn't look like there are any further questions. You've answered them or anticipated them? Thank you so much for coming to our meeting.
Thank you all for having me. Have a great evening.
Thank you for what you do. We're now up to Article 18. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $600 to the Southern SEVP Watershed Alliance? Does anyone have any questions or want to speak to Article 18? Seeing no raised hands, we'll move on to Article 19, which asks the voters of Newfane to appropriate the sum of $2,000 to the Stafford Newfane Community Association. Is there any comment or question about Article 19? You can find the report on page 128. Seeing no raised hands, we'll move on to Article 20, which asks the voters of the town of Newfane to appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Thompson Hill Preschool. Are there any questions or comments about Article 20? Article 21, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate $1,000 to the Gathering Place? Any comments or questions? Article 22, shall the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $750 to the Mover? Comments or questions? I see no raised hands. So Article 23, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate $2,675 to Valley Cares? Questions or comments? Bill Gunther, I see your hand up. We're waiting for Bill to come on the line?
Am I live?
You are live. We hear you.
Yes, I would like to speak in support of Valley Cares. A couple of reasons. I've known some of the residents. Some folks I've done some volunteer driving for. They find it a wonderful facility. Personally, when I was rehabbing from knee replacements, they loaned me quite a bit of medical equipment that I didn't have to go out and buy. And that was all at no cost. I, of course, gave them a donation, but really good group of folks. And I think that was a real vision to be able to have a facility like that up here in the valley. So I wholly support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else want to speak to Valley Cares? Article 24? No, Article 23. Now we're on Article 24, which asks the voters of Newfane to appropriate the sum of $220 to the Vermont Center for Independent Living. And their report is on page 132. Is there any comment or question about Article 24? I'm not seeing any raised hands. We'll move on to Article 25. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $400 to Vermont Adult Learning? Any questions or comments? I'm looking for the raised hand icon and I see none. Article 26, shall the voters of Newfane appropriate the sum of $100 to the Vermont Greenup? Any questions or comments about Vermont Greenup? We'll move on to Article 27, which asks the voters of Newfane to appropriate $4,500 to the Visiting Nurses Alliance and Hospice for Vermont and New Hampshire. And their report is on page 133. And the chair recognizes Bill Gunther. Bill, you're on.
I'd like to speak again in support of the Visiting Nurses Alliance. While I was rehabbing from my knee replacements, they sent a physical therapist out to my house because I was unable to drive anywhere for six weeks. And he put up with me in a miserable condition and again, got me back on track. And it's just a wonderful service. And I was, they'd come all the way up here on the mountain, but they did. They got me back out in the woods and back to work. So I wholly support them. Thank you.
Does anyone want to add anything? Seeing no more raised hands, we'll move on to Article 28. Shall the voters appropriate $1,000 to the Williamsville School Preservation Society? Is there any comment or question for Article 28? Article 29, shall the voters of Newfane appropriate $250 to the Wyndham County Historical Society? Any questions or comments about Article 29? Article 30, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate $720 to the Wyndham County Humane Society? Any questions or comments? Article 31, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate $1,000 to the Women's Freedom Center? Any questions or comments about Article 31? Article 32, shall the voters of Newfane appropriate $1,660 to UCL Services? Any questions or comments about Article 32? Article 33, shall the voters of Newfane appropriate $250 to Windart? Any questions or comments about Article 33? That is the end of the special appropriations. On the, on the warning, you will be, every voter will be able to vote yes or no for each particular appropriation. And Bucky Pels is giving us a round of applause. We now move on to Article 34. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize general fund expenditures for town and highway operating expenses of $1,599, of which $1,299,799 shall be raised by taxes and $30197 by non-tax revenues? Is there any discussion or questions? You'll use the raise hand function if you want to say something. Thank you, Bucky, is still clapping his hands. Take that as an affirmation. Bill Gunther, you're recognized. Bill, do you want to say something? Speak to Article 34?
This is, I'm looking for the, mark before and now. Oh, yes. On page 15, under General. Every, as far as I know, every town, the county pays a tax to the county of Wyndham. And I believe is that do select board members know if that is based on a per capita basis? Currently, it's $22,669.
So the question for the select board is, is the county tax, the Wyndham County tax figured on a per capita basis?
I think we need Melissa, our treasurer, to answer that if she's available.
Melissa, Melissa, do you know the answer to that question? Are you still with us? Melissa, there you are.
Yes, it is based on a per capita basis.
So the answer is yes, it is a per capita basis. Any further questions?
Yeah, and I don't know if this will be appropriate under this article or if this would be appropriate under other business. But I have some questions in regards to the recent decision by the sheriff to move the sheriff's department out of the county shire town. So I guess in relation to this article, I'm wondering, would that move have any impact on this particular tax that we pay?
I don't, is there anyone here who can answer that?
None that we know of at this point. And I guess it's their prerogative to move. Which allows a nice historical building to become available.
So this might, this is a question, Bill, that might be asked of the side judges or the, and I don't believe there are any side judges here tonight.
No. No, neither of them are here. One of them's a Rockingham resident, one of them lives in Browderboro, I believe. One of them's a Rockingham resident, one of them lives in Brattleboro, I believe, and I don't see their names here. I'll probably take it up with them and the sheriff, but I'll just maybe shoot off my mouth and say, I'm really against this. Every other county sheriff's department is in the shiretown, with the exception of Chittenden County. And that's a, I don't know, it's one of those Vermont traditions, and I guess Mark Anderson's got his reasons, but I don't know, I'd like him to at least explore to see whether or not we can keep it in New Fane.
Is anyone, oh, Shelley, you want to speak? Go ahead.
Yes, I did hear that their basis was to move to Brattleboro was because a majority of their work is in Brattleboro, and they're cooperating or allowing for the space to be used by Supreme Court or Superior Court for backup, and also they needed additional training space. So they were, and also there were electrical and security issues based on the historical building that, in currently, that was preventing them from growing and, you know, having appropriate technological resources.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to take that up with Mark Anderson, because that's exactly what I saw in the paper, those were the items listed, but there wasn't anything real, real specific. But thank you, folks, for trying to answer that. I know that's kind of out of your pay.
That's what I know.
Is there anything else? Bill? Oh, he's gone. Are there any other, any other discussion? Bucky, did you want to say something to Article 34? Maybe not. Any other discussion about Article 34? If not, we'll move on to Article 35. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane authorize capital fund expenditures of $316,345, of which $315,345 shall be raised by taxes and $1,000 by non-tax revenues? Is there any, any questions or discussion about Article 35? Okay, we'll move on to Article 36. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane raise by taxation the amount of $28,634 for the annual excavator lease payment? Are there any questions or comments about Article 36? Well, maybe you all came for Article 37. Oh, no, no, we're not there yet. We're missing. Okay, so Article 37 is, shall the voters of the town of New Fane approve the transfer of surplus funds in the amount of $125,000 to the Capital Reserve Fund? Page 22. Is there any, are there any questions or comments about that? Now, if this were an in-person town meeting, we would have an Article 38 to discuss any non-binding business to come before the meeting. Did you come, have all your questions been answered, or would you like to use some time now, while your Select Board is here, to have a moderated discussion about something that's on your mind? And Becky, Bucky Pelsu, the chair recognizes you.
This is a general question I tried to, back when we were on the appropriation articles. If a person is not satisfied with the amount that is being proposed for a particular organization and voted down, and there are, and votes no, and there are enough no votes, does that mean that that organization would not be funded by the town of New Fane, or that it would be, or would it all be possible for that organization to ask the town to reconsider?
I think that's a question possibly for Melissa Brown, or is there someone on the Select Board who can answer that question?
Melissa can, yes, Melissa can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe if the town votes no on any of the special appropriations, that's where it's left. Is that correct, Melissa?
Yeah, that's it. If it's all voted down on the no, then they don't get the money and it just comes out of the budget.
We work the budget back in with the plus.
Okay, thank you.
We just rework the number, yeah.
And, okay, Bill Gunther, you're recognized for the chair.
Mike, one line.
Yes, sir. Hi.
Yes, yeah, I'd like to just give my annual thanks to Jay and the boys on the road crew. I haven't walked up the mountain yet this year, so that's how I judge how well they're doing. They're doing a great job. I know they had a tough time last summer. We had two back-to-back storms in July that made it pretty tough, but they, they did a really nice job getting things back together. Things, you know, things are a little rough in a few places, but I'm not going to whine. When I moved out here, I knew what I was getting into, but I want to give my annual thank you to the road crew folks. I see them out working all kinds of crazy hours. If I'm not mistaken, I believe they're out on Christmas Day, so I really appreciate all their efforts.[1434.33][1434.33](APPLAUSE).
I think I saw one of the town trucks pass on Route 30, just while we've been in here.
Probably so.
So is there any, does anyone have anything else to bring before the meeting?
Is there another meeting?
Is that Mike?
Are we all done with the meeting at this point?
I think we're done with the informational meeting. This is all, so this is what happens when we go to Australian ballot, is we have, we have, the Select Board does the same work it does for town meeting of creating a budget and creating a warning, and they do this in their public meetings that anyone can go to and have, and have input in. And the last time I went to a budget meeting, I asked for seven, I asked for $500 to get a PA system for town meeting, and I was granted $750. Sadly, we haven't been able to use those microphones for the last two years, but hopefully we will again next year. Thank you all for attending the informational meeting, which will now adjourn and go back to the Select Board meeting, the regular Select Board meeting, which you can stay for and see how it is done. Thank you all very much, and I'll hope to see you next year.
Thank you so much, Deb, for running that, that you do a great job, as always.
Thank you. Signing off.
Take care. So we will reconvene the regular Select Board meeting at 7:00, and that is the last thing we have, unless there's any other. Would you want to talk about that?
What, you got left of the Select Board meeting?
We're, we're finishing up right now. Hold on one second.
This is only from the Lister's office. It's a certificate for them stating that there's been no taxes underpaid or protests.
So we just need to sign it?
You just need to sign it, and then it goes to the town clerk.
And we can do that during pay orders?
Correct.
Great.
Can I say something?
Yes, Mike, of course.
I just wanted to say, I didn't know, you know, well, the thing on, I was going to say to the, I just wanted to thank you ladies for all that you've done with the gravel bank, all the work you guys did on that. You guys did an excellent job, and I just hope everything goes as smooth as I had the first part of it. If it does, we'll be having our gravel bank be in there this summer, you know, I think, you know? By the end of the summer, they'll be getting gravel out of that, which the town really needs and stuff, but, you know, I think all, all you girls and ladies did a hell of a job. You did a hell of a good job. It's been my pleasure to be on the board with all of you. I hope the ones that want to get back on, that select men get on. And I'd just like to thank Shelley for all the time that she's had on the board. She's always had the town interest at her heart, and I think she's done a hell of a good job, and I think you all have, so I just wanted to get that out tonight, too, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yep.
And with that, we'll move into, unless someone else has, anyone else have anything they'd like to say? Shelley?
So this will be my last meeting, almost nearly five years, and I've really enjoyed it. I've learned a lot, and I've, you know, attended at these meetings with a full heart most of the time, and encourage other people to come and join the Select Board and take a turn at it. And, you know, it's, you think it could be divisive, but it's actually, we all come together in the common good of the community. And it's been interesting and fulfilling to be a part of this Select Board.
It's been a pleasure to work with you, too.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
So good luck going forth.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move into pay orders. I'd like to thank everyone for coming here tonight and being present for our meeting, and stay safe, and have a great night, and don't forget to come vote.
And that's going to be at the New Fane Town Office from 9 to 7.
At the office.
At the office.
Right.